You're not going up on Thursday?
No, I'm not. I mean, I can give a personal call. Cause he's still in college, right?
A little. He's kind of floating here and around. He's got senioritis right now, you know what I mean? He's like, I've right here took my finals. I've just gotta be here for.
Yeah. I just kicked it.
And that was your second surgery, right? The first one didn't go through. That mail.
You do that at your own risk.
Unless his email or not, he's not well.
I didn't get to know his. Is he gonna make it?
He's never gonna make it at all. I don't know. I don't know.
Dad has fun with Sam Dier for his birthday.
He always does.
Did he win?
Um, he did better on the, on his birthday, but then we had to leave, so. Hey, unless they're getting sued, I don't need it.
Okay, you're all clear.
Okay, good.
They'll poetry busting.
Well, some one shy.
I have. If one of them meet this, I think I have one hanging in my window. At work.
Yeah. Anthony, you're not providing that.
Is that the historic district?
Creative district.
So the mainstream group is.
It said it's nice for beds, but then even if you break the body, it's.
Yes.
Maybe shot in Colorado, Canada, it's generic, I guess. Hey, good evening and welcome to tonight's reading and work session. Today is March nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, that was about five sixteen. Work session is now called order. Have a couple of items we just wanted to bring up and I think you all have seen this. I had brought this up when we had our state of the community, when I did the state of the community address. Just a couple of ideas and both of each one, and we just wanted to get, you know, okay, and see what your thoughts are. Do you think this is a good idea? You know, I've thought about it for some time. And the first item on there is the informal community group. You know, for the longest time, I've always felt like, you know, we get a lot of people in the community on boards and commissions and other areas that people get interested in. But one area that we have always struggled to get involved is the actual business community, because most of the time the business community are so busy operating their business that it's hard for them to to volunteer in services for commissions or whatever that's, uh, meet on a regular basis. And this is just kind of an informal, uh, kind of leadership type group that I'm looking at. And what I'd like to do is, uh, get one of the county commissioners and myself on this to begin, to pick probably eight or ten, um, at least ten business leaders from the community and the county between about eight to ten. So that we could sit down and take a look, as a matter of fact, you guys probably saw when I passed these out. When I did my, uh, state of the community, uh, I had this up on the board. And there's one item on there that I'm going to add to that, that's economic development. And the whole purpose of this is to get some input from some of the business people that, to get some new ideas. Cause you know, we as a group, a lot of times we sit and we think about ideas of what we think the community needs, but sometimes it doesn't hurt to get additional input from other people, especially the business community. And I think, uh, I believe that they could be a big asset to what we are trying to do to continue and to expand what we're trying to do in, you know, in the city and in the county as well. Because, you know, between the city and the county, we're all in this together. And then what happened for that, this will not turn into a commission or a board of any kind from the city. It's just, uh, a meeting to see what their thoughts are. We may have another meeting at some point, we may not, it just depends on the group as to what they think. So I'm just gonna leave them, leave it up to them as to what, uh, what their thoughts are. They may be able to take this chart that I gave you and offer that, we'll use it as a format so that they can look at that, and if you look at that format that's there, it can go on in many, many different other areas, under each category. So we just, I, what I'd like to do is take a look from their perspective to see what they believe is probably the one or two items of most importance for the city and the county. And then what they would, I'd like for them to do is to come to city council and present and say, this is what this group has talked about. And same thing, they will take over the county commission and relay the same information so that they can give us their perspective as to what their thoughts are. Like I said, they may meet once, they may want to meet twice a year, but I don't, I would not recommend them meeting probably more than twice a year, because these people are busy. But I think we could just use some experience, uh, beyond what we, we have on a, and what we do on a regular basis. So just open it up to questions from council, Mr. Matei.
So they make their presentations to council and the commission with what expectation?
Well, just to let us know what they think that from their eyes of what is probably of most importance to go forward, to help us move forward in our community.
Okay, and earlier on you talked about selecting purposefully a number of people. How do you make that selection? And I guess if they're only meeting once or twice a year, how would that be any different or better or improved version of just having community people, just that large meeting? Of course, those get a little unwieldy and, and, and that's kind of a problem. I see what you're trying to do.
And I think that's why.
I think I see what you're trying to do.
I wanna narrow down.
And I, I value that, I think it's important. It's just that we need to be careful not to create the aura of false promises. That whatever you decide, we will do. You know, we, we will pave the road to something else. Can I make it?
Right.
Well, I agree. Yeah, I understand what I'm trying to say, there's probably some good ideas, because as they work within the scope of their environment, the things that they do. They, the guy was the E-waste that I, who went on a time, he, he sat in his shop thinking about adds him out, but we need to do this, and there I went with a 14B that I wrote for you. And, and talked with him, and then I suggested doing what you're doing. Ask him to come and explain what the magnitude of the process, he saw it. And, and what the concerns are. But yeah, I think it's probably has some potential. It's just that we have to keep it manageable so that it's not unwieldy, and more importantly, that we don't create a situation where people have false expectations.
And that's why I say, you know, I just want those eight or ten people, it'll have to be an open meeting, of course.
Yeah.
But those two people will control the meeting. And what I'd like to see from council here, and we'll ask the county commissioner the same thing, is if you guys have any particular people that you think that would be good for us to consider? Cause what I'll do is like, I'll get one of the commissioners. And we'll sit down, and we'll go through the list of people that we can come up with, that we all can come up with. And see who we feel would be best to fill those.
The county represents a huge geographical area. You're talking about people out of Kim and, and near Pritchett. And, and then people coming from the mountain, the people live out in Stonewall and up the canyon. And, and not a lot of those people, there isn't many of those people, in what I do now, and this being a busy time of the year for us, there are many people who have relocated here from Arker, from Denver, you know, and they're bringing ideas based on their past experience living there and what opportunities and, and like the guy said, one lady I was talking to, she said, we're buying groceries here is kind of a challenge, because you can go to Walmart or you can go to Safeway. And she was very frustrated with either experience, and I'm not making an Android comment or one way or the other, just expl- explaining. And she said, well, in Denver, I have many options. And, uh, she said that she, she does Amazon every day, just because that's what she needs to do, you get the things that she needs. They bring a whole new perspective.
They do.
To someone like me who lives here my whole life.
Well, that's, that's what I think that we as a, as a council and even the county commissioners, we need to be open to listening to some of these people with those other experiences to see how and if they will fit into our.
Well, and, and I think as we have many times, sorry to monopolize here, this is my last comment, I'll shut up. Education and medical are always a big priority for us, and I think we have someone who represents those disciplines would be helpful to, to be on your committee.
Well, if you have any ideas of people, send me an email.
And I don't mean necessarily the superintendent of schools or the CEO of hospital, they, they, there are a lot of things. Maybe what we need is one of those registered nurses who works in a nurse, in the emergency room in the middle of the night. Or some teacher at the medicine, I, I don't know.
Yeah, these are things we need to explore. Karen?
I agree with that, education and, and medical are top. But I think if we go down main and commercial, I mean, bankers would be people, people that have invested in downtown Trinidad as far as, uh, actually having storefronts that they maybe some newcomers, maybe some people that have been here doing business for several years, but I think it's worth a shot. I mean, you know, you'd be surprised when you talk about the people that live outside the city limits. I was at the Main Street group this afternoon, and they didn't know that you didn't have to be a resident of Trinidad to be on the Main Street. And, you know, there's the number of qualifications that have to be there, but I think if we could get a hold of some of these people to bring them in and ask them, you know, what are we doing right, what are we needing from them?
Well, the other thing that this does too is if we get people, let's say from a couple of people in the outlying areas, they'll be able to go back and talk to the people in their area, and what that does is it starts to include some of these people from the outlying areas. And I've always felt like they've, the people in the outlier areas don't always feel inclusive.
They don't. And you know, it's really strange, the past ten years, the majority of development has been outside the city limits.
Carlos.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah.
Okay, sure.
Um, first of all, uh, we already have the Main Street merchants group. Have you spoken to them about any of this, or are you aware of what they do?
Downtown merchants.
Downtown merchants, is that what they're called? I haven't, maybe I'm getting the name on, but there's a group.
The one that involves.
There, it's, it's default.
Is it?
I think so.
Okay, I knew that there was a thing, I just didn't know if it's still running, but, um, I would hope that from what I've heard in the past, sometimes those meetings kind of were not productive. You know, there was a lot of, well, we want this, and we want that, well, we can't do that, and, you know, I, I would hope that whoever is running it and can, uh, kind of mediate through the waters where we don't have a screaming fest of what's more important.
Right.
Mine is more important than yours is more important, so I think that's, they all are important.
Sure.
And that's got to be, um, discussed and respected for the people who come on the board. Now, how many people are you wanting to have on this?
Probably about ten.
About ten?
Probably max ten.
Okay, uh, and that's between the county and the city, correct?
Right.
And again, I think Mr. Matei said that you were gonna have both of these groups come before both council and the commissioners?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I think it's a good idea. I do think maybe more than twice a year would be beneficial, maybe four times, like quarterly. Because if they're only doing it twice, then you may lose some of those sheep, you know, throughout that, that luff and, um, that way you can still kind of come back to something that's still close in their mind, for in the memory. Um, but again, it depends on if they feel it's valuable and it's worth their time. Because they're gonna wanna see results, that's the bottom line. If I was on this group, I would say this is important to me, I'm just gonna say in Philhousen. That's important to me, if we don't see something within a year, then I'm wasting my time and what I'm doing here is not valuable. So to Mr. Matei's point, we can't promise them everything, but we still gotta have something tangible to show for it.
I agree.
So we've gotta make sure that we are on board and ready to commit to being able to facilitate some of these things. And, and you wanted to add on economic development, right?
Yeah, and it, it really boils down, if you look at all those categories, it boils down to economic, the economic development in the end anyway, what it does. But it's, it's a component, actually.
Okay, um.
You know, and off of each one of those categories, you can start filtering.
Oh, you can do a ton of more things, I mean, this is, they're very broad stroked.
And that was my idea, broadness for right now. And we'll let them decide, look through that and see, uh, what they're, try to narrow down to maybe a couple of items that they could go concentrate upon.
And, and I do really like the ideas that were iterated by Mr. Matei and Mrs. Drago, that we need to have someone not from the higher echelon of that particular, um, faction of the city, but someone who's in the trenches, like a teacher or nurse, because they're gonna know what's really going on in terms of what we need. Um, the teachers are gonna know, you know, what the kids need versus what the superintendent may just be told what they need. And same with Mr. Tucker in his capacity, the CEO, the nurses say, I need more of this, I need more blankets, medicine, um, whatever. Excuse me, um. Yeah, I, I think this could be a really great thing, we just have to make sure that it's, it's productive.
Sure, okay.
That's all I have.
Okay. What do you see as the output of this group? When they appear before council, what does that presentation look like? The presentation comes to us and say, we've identified probably no more than two categories right up front. To say these, this is what the group has decided on, that we feel that you as the city and you as the county are your greater concentration, these are probably the most immediate needs that we have, it could be housing, it could be medical, it could be. You know, I agree with you in that, but if we have business leaders house, um, housing, education and medical, how do they come up with only two? Cause you know, I mean, the business people are gonna wanna revamp the city's parking lot. The medical people are gonna want, I don't know, a CRT machine. Uh, I think, I think the way you look at it, the way I wanna look at it is, okay, what really is the starting point? Is it, is it the education system, is it the medical system, is it, uh, you know, which category in this really is really the starting point? Well, and, and multiple perspectives on two important issues is a good thing. It's just, I think sometimes we've, at the downtown merchants, we really didn't get very far, even though city managers attended, I attended, who didn't, you know, as Carlos said, it did break down. So I think we also had, um, I think under John Reno, he had task forces that were assigned to tackle problems, that went nowhere, that, that didn't go anywhere. We had TCF, and, you know, we had the big thing where people broke into groups, and originally there were a hundred and twenty-five people showing up with the beaters, saying, oh, it's it was wonderful in concept, but we end up with attrition. Yeah. So I guess I'd just caution on that and say, this could be very powerful, but it's gotta learn from mistakes in the past, something like that. I appreciate that. Yeah, and, uh, but otherwise, I think it's great, and I agree with you, there are a lot of people who don't have time to come to city council, and, and don't. If nothing else, what this confection has is pushing information into, you know, I think we need to do this. Well, no, we can't, because that belongs to C-Dot, you know, that kind of thing. Good. Rusty?
Well, I think it's a lot of good points, um, I think it's worth a try and, and, you know, with the hopes that something good can come out of it. Maybe this would be the, um, attempt that'll get some results, it'll be positive for the community finally. And like I said, like Michelle just said, if we can learn from past failures and move forward, I like the idea that it's between the county and the city with people from all aspects. I have a couple of people, good people in mind for this that have relocated here that are in the senior category that, um, I think you'd give it a good aspect that were a long time in the, uh, health field. And, uh, so yeah, I think it'd be a good, uh, a good idea.
Well, you know, what's with, one, the other thing that this does too is like I said, you know, in the past, we're trying to bring the city and the county to work closer together, so this is another component of that, bringing the two entities closer together to work.
Well, that was my next question, have you already discussed this with the county?
I discussed that with Luis a little bit, with Luis.
This was commissioned.
Just one commission. No, it's the chair though.
Huh?
He's the chair of the chair.
I didn't say nothing.
Yeah. So I, I discussed that with.
This would probably be a better way to get up, a better relationship with the county too, because I think it would be interactive and and show that at least the community that we're working together and trying to get something going, but, uh, yeah, that, I don't have no.
I don't.
Question.
Sure. When Commissioner Loudon was in the chairman position, did, did you ever reach out to him with similar type of notion?
I never did, I never did, because when I thought about this, it was last year, and I knew that there would be a change in the commission this year. And I figured I'd just wait till the new commission members came on board before I approached it.
Okay, that makes sense.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, you know, Michelle said about Mr. Reno, like, what would that call that group that?
It was, it was business leaders, yeah, the blue ribbon task.
Blue ribbon.
Yeah.
And that was a, that was a pretty good idea that we were going for. And then, then all of a sudden, we were all gung ho, and then all of a sudden it just crashed, because I don't know whether the council didn't wanna listen, or whether the, the blue ribbon or whatever they were, just had too many things going on, but it, it's never.
I think smaller.
It's a charity, right, Michelle? And that's a good idea.
Before my time on council, but, you know. One of the things that I think that we could do is that by getting only ten people, if we have a couple of people that fall off, you can bring in a couple of new people into this.
And those, and those, and the living council is mostly made up of, uh, of, uh, business leaders, if I remember.
Yeah, it was.
So, but other, that's all I.
One more question, how would this fit in with the Dana Crawford Vision Project? It would be. Could be integrated? Possibly, but we'll have to look at that, we'll have to see how they feel about, how the group feels about it.
I would almost think they'd have to be separate, because their visioning group is built more on commercial development of older historic pres- preserve, preserved buildings or new buildings like that are trying to be erected, I, I almost think that.
It's almost part of it now.
Maybe it is, but I mean, just from someone like, if I was on the street like, well, isn't that kind of two separate things here now?
I don't mind the concept, that's all.
Right, exactly, and.
Sweet, try, we can keep that simple, yeah, okay. All right, we'll move forward with that, thanks guys, appreciate that. The second idea that I had, uh, was, you know, for the longest time, I've always felt that, uh, you know, the Chamber of Commerce, you know, tourism, Main Street, economic development, which we're looking at, Creative District, uh, those are the four or five items or entities in the community that, uh, other than the Chamber of Commerce that has what I call a storefront. And, uh, right now, if someone came into the community and said, where's tourism? They have no place to go. If they wanted to know, where is Main Street? They have no place to go other than a phone call. So I think a good idea would be to explore the possibility of getting these four or five entities in one building, they would create, they would maintain their identity. In other words, Main Street would be Main Street, Chamber of Commerce would be the Chamber of Commerce, Tourism would be Main Street. But it would be a one-stop shop, where somebody can go into a building, and if they ask where Tourism is, well, it's next door. Where is Main Street, what is Main Street, we can send them to Main Street. So I believe that it does a couple of things, one is it houses everybody in one building, if that's doable. And this is something that's not gonna happen within the next year, it's gonna take a while to try to even put this together. The second thing that it'll allow them to do is to be able to share, uh, you know, finances. They could have the building, they can share rent, they could share phone services, they could share, you know, other expenses that they have. And, uh, and still maintain where we're, uh, open for business, I mean, that's been one of the things that we do. Trinidad is open for business. So we had to allow this building to basically say Trinidad is open for business. And like I said, this is another idea, it will not become a board of commissioners of the city of Trinidad. This will be something that will be able to get put in place over a period of time. And then, once they're in place, then, you know, they maintain their own identities and, and operate from there for the betterment of the community and as well as people coming in looking for information for the city. Or even the county, for that fact. Mr. McDonald?
I was trying to use, anytime the city and that could save money, you got to come a hundred percent for that, so, and it's a good idea. I did think of having them put it in one building and one unit where people at least could go there without being sent here, sent there, or like you said, on a telephone call, so, yeah, I, you know, that's, that's a good idea, Mr. Mayor, I think that you came up with there. Like you said, it's not gonna happen overnight, but maybe the future council and whatever, you know, we could get this started and where they did good setup.
Yeah, we just wanna start exploring it to see what the.
Absolutely, I agree with you, that's a good deal, I think that.
Rusty?
Oh, I think it'd definitely be a conversation that should include the entities you're talking about, seeing if it'd be something they'd be willing to do, cause sticking them all together without being willing to gravitate, I don't think it would be a good idea, but, uh, other than that, if, where are you thinking, or have you got any ideals that you place in particular?
At this point in time, the whole idea right now, and you, you brought up a question there, and I have talked to the chairs of each one of these entities to see if they're at least willing to sit down and, and discuss it. And so far, they've all said yes, they'd like to at least sit down and discuss.
All right, good, that's a good deal. That's all I.
You and I have talked about this, just when it came up, I guess a couple months ago, and, uh, the feedback I gave you then, I think I still feel it, is I don't know about this storefront access, where people just walk in off the street, because none of those boards have staff. And I can tell you, Marilyn is not gonna sit in that office and take an eight-hour shift and then rotate it with other board members, that, I think that's problematic. You know, the question is right now, I, I'll speak for Creative District, cause that's the one I know the most about. They're not paying rent anywhere, you know, they meet in international banks conference rooms, sometimes at the chamber. Um, so the idea of saving money, I think it sounds like spending money, because you're gonna have to pay rent, which is not being paid now. Number two, how do they have the staff? You know, there would have to be a full-time staff now, that way to show up for forty hours a week and then, you know, go out to the community. Um, the third piece of feedback is that I know that Creative District, as its heart set, and certain things were said, and maybe really stakeholder in having an office in Space to Create. It was kind of on the list of things, I think, based on our, um, planning retreat in December, I think they're thinking that, you know, pushing all of the activities that are going on in Space to Create into the community and bringing the community in is a function that they can perform quite well. And, uh, so I think if that's at the Welcome Center or wherever, I mean, at one point I think that was thrown around, or the East Street School, I, I don't see that, I think, I think that thwarts that ambition, whether it's. You're talking about the Creative District side, right? That's, yeah, and I don't, I can't speak for Main Street or, you know, Chamber of Commerce or whatever. But those are my thoughts, and, you know, I think it's fine, I'm sure all of the commission heads are willing to sit down, I think those are, that's some of the feedback you will get. Sure, that's fine, yeah, and the whole idea, we, besides that too, is that we are, especially now that we're able to move forward with the for Space to Create project, there's, and I know where that came from, about them moving and tapping an office or something. Yeah, small office. And they, they may still have to pay rent there too, but anyway. And they may still have to pay rent there too, but anyway. And I recognize that there might be one or two of these organizations that may not wanna participate. These are all things we need to explore.
Okay, I'm with you.
My first thought was kind of like, well, is this gonna turn into a facility kind of like the Welcome Center? Where people can come in, remain, not have the same like the brochures, but you have information about the boards and commissions that we have here in Trinidad. Now, I'm not saying that building, but kind of like that concept. Then I started thinking locations, and my first thought after that was the Johnson Building. You know, we were kind of doing things like that there. I know the Urban Forestry Board was meeting in there for a while, and then, was that building up for sale or something?
Yeah, we were looking seriously at it.
Mm-hmm, and the thing I like about it is it's in a downtown location, it's already ADA compliant. Updates have been made for, you know, plumbing, electricity, things like that. But then I started thinking about some other buildings that we own, like the Hughes-Lumber Building or the Children's Museum. You know, we could revitalize one of our own buildings, and TSAC can continue to have that building, or we could do something with it, I mean, that's just my thoughts. But I mean, if we get a building, because we're gonna have to have a structure, brick and mortar, are you thinking more like building something new?
No, it would have to be something that we would, we tried to utilize what we've got now.
Okay, because I would rather, if we went this route, have an old building that we have and, you know, put some skin into this game and refurbish it for them, for our people, for future boards and commissions to come. That way they know they always have a home. And maybe through a resolution or something, make sure that it stays that way, unless there's some emergency where we have to do something about that building. But I think as long as you can communicate with the commissioners or the chairman of those commissions and boards, why not explore it?
I think, to me, that's what I thought, just explore the idea and see where it comes in.
And in, to Ms. Miles's point, there may be some boards that may have their heart set on something else, and that's fine. We have about, what, eight or nine commissions right now?
Seven.
Right in there? I mean, even if you put six of them in there, and we were to facilitate an administrative assistant of some sort, where they're taking phone calls, getting emails sent out to the boards and commissions, that way they're informed from the people who come in, I think that would enhance what our boards and commissions do. And I think that that could be something that is an investment in our own community and our commission saying, "Yes, we wanna see you thrive and do better. Here is a tool that we're gonna pay for, a staff member that will make sure that you are being in the loop with thoughts and communications from people in the community, from the business community, people coming new to Trinidad that are wanting to participate." Because I see a lot of the new people coming to town who really want and getting involved with these boards. And that's pretty, pretty, leave me with a good feeling, because they care.
You brought up a good point about maybe even the boards and commissions, if you have somebody in there at least answer the phone and say, "The Park to Recreation and whoever the chairperson is, they can have someplace to go and meet people."
Right.
I hadn't thought of that, but that's.
And then they can forward off emails or create them, they can be that hub for most of those groups. That way, their burden is lessened, but yet they're being able to produce more. That's my thought.
Sure.
I'm gonna play devil's advocate.
Okay.
I agree.
We always need one.
Pardon? My horns are up tonight, so I just, no, I think that's counterproductive, I really do. Because the only, the only two entities that really need a storefront is like Michelle said, Chamber of Commerce and Tourism. We have a little problem now, because we have tourism housed in an area that's not really, you know, when C-Dot moved that exit, it's not really conducive to a lot of tourists. But I think those two, yes, I'm on the Main Street group, I see no reason to have somebody answering the phone, because everything goes through City Hall. And I mean, we have a great meeting space for it here. I really think we should concentrate on tourism and Chamber, maybe. The only reason the Chamber's not down there now is because their space isn't ADA compliant. But I'm very, don't tell my husband this, because he'll deny it, but I'm very frugal with money, and I just see this, I see this idea just going, you know, costing a lot more money than it needs to be.
Well, these are things that we'll all, you know, discuss and explore before we even, they even make a decision. It's just not only gonna be up to me, it's gonna be up to the council, it's gonna be up to them to whether they wanna do it or not. But I think, like, in talking to the chairs so far, they at least wanna sit down and at least talk.
That's, I agree with that.
And that's all.
Talking is, as long as it doesn't cost money, I'm for it.
I think that it's well-intentioned, but what it does is it creates a layer of logistics and expense that we may not know about, which have already been made in terms of rent and paying for a phone line and paying for internet. So as to be sending emails and things like that, paying for stationery, paying for staff or a person to be there to answer that phone. And does the benefit, does the expense outweigh the benefit? Or not the expense, the concerns outweigh the benefit. I think that, from what, I've only attended one meeting, and I have a little bit of some comments that I'll later return to that meeting. But there needs to be, I think, someone to coordinate and shepherd the activities of all the different groups there. Well-meaning, well-intentioned volunteers, that's an important word to remember throughout all of this, is that there are volunteers. It'll benefit to them other than their undying interest in doing this kind of thing. To keep them, they're not getting a paycheck or not getting any benefits, so it's something that they do. I think that, and up to those different boards and commissions, tourism generates some funds. Chamber of Commerce, I think, generates some funds.
Creative District.
Yeah, okay, but not all of them generate funds, so far as I'm aware. Arts and Culture did, I attended, did some, although they had money-making projects. The money that they did get from us, we have scaled back. So we can't ask them to contribute to something that they may or may not find necessary, so that we can feel good about what we're doing, except if we pony up the money for it. Which I think offers an opportunity for us to hire or have somebody to shepherd all the activities. I don't wanna get ahead of myself here, but there's some arts and crafts kinds of things and decorative things to put in. There was some discussion of flowers and roses and sunflowers and stuff. They have a whole big plan about where to put them, but it's kind of inconsistent with ADA plans and it's kind of random. And it may be in conflict with that which other, Main Street program, or whoever's responsible for replacing the pianos. It has, and I don't wanna have is a helter-skeeter, a haphazard kind of display of art that's a mosaic that is not centrally oriented to a particular theme and could be inconsistent with what we're trying to do. And it's not cheap, some of the numbers that I heard, they were like thousands of dollars.
Yeah, I was on that commission for a while.
Thousands of dollars for a bunch of roses and some sunflowers. They're nice, they're very pretty. Where are we gonna put them? And what do we hope to gain by making that spread? The point I'm trying to make is, I hope that we don't create a level of expense that we can't sustain.
Well, like I said, when I bring these people together, we'll move with caution, I think.
And just to amend what I said before, like, we do not have all of us going to spend it. At a, you know, sponsoring projects, and get some money from the state, that's sort of around that initial period of the higher funding.
So I talked to, I did talk to one of the chairpersons, wherever she came from, she says, "Where I come from, this is what they did." They had different groups in every building, it worked out.
Well, if somehow it's to, just to open this point, that they can get some administrative support in conjunction, which is, I think it changes the picture a little bit. But I don't see board members waiting for them.
They're too busy.
Oh, we're talking about, just to begin with, these people that are down there. But like I said, I'll go in, I'll bring them together, I'll talk to them, and see if they think that there's any viability to this. And we'll bring out all of the caution that you guys are talking about.
I mean, like you said, it's worth to do if it's free, and then talk.
All we can do is.
Okay, that's all I had. If somebody else has any other comments, we've got about some eight minutes, if we're gonna rig our session. Okay?
For your session?
Okay.